Hello, everybody. Welcome to another Channel 781 Walltham City Council debrief. This week in the city council committee meetings, the committees met with their new membership that Council McMenamin announced last week. And chose their chairs. And there was also an interesting issue that came up in one of the committees about housing at Brandeis. That we'll talk about a little bit. I am here with Chris Gamble.
Hi.
And James Kirk Kellys.
Hello.
And Channel 781 News is a collaboration of Grouches of Walltham and Walltham Data. Go check out the Walltham Data YouTube channel, because that's where we'll be posting these as in addition to Grouches of Walltham. And so last night's meeting, the committee of the whole meeting was recorded by WCAC. But the other meetings were not recorded except for the licenses and franchises committee, which James recorded. And that's normal. Those, most of the committees are usually not recorded. So we would like to try to change that. And have volunteers go in and get all of them recorded. So if you're interested in helping with that, get in touch with us. That being said, I am going to turn it over to James, who's going to try to summarize for us what happened regarding the Brandeis issue. In the licenses and franchises committee, James?
So briefly, they voted for the chair of the committee and then went to approving the lodging house renewals in the city. And which are dormitories and shared housing space. And Paul Katz, the Kate's, the Ward Seven counselor. Brought up the poor housing conditions on Brandeis campus and highlighted an article that was published in the school newspaper where there was a. Basically, exactly this where they brought up mold and mice and like a water contamination issue. There was sort of a brief exchange between the Vidal and Gates about the like what to do and they. Opted to table the renewal of the entire batch of brand I storm permanent renewals until an official from Brandeis came to the next or came to meeting to discuss the situation.
And we noted that Counselor Vidal, in response to Counselor Kate's bringing this upbringing. So the article listed mold mice, including a mouse highway, I believe, discovered in a residence hall and water contamination. And then Counselor Vidal asked, have has anyone hired an inspector to confirm whether the mold is actually mold? So we're going to leave it up to our viewers. Here's the picture of the mold. So you can decide for yourself if it's actually mold or not. But actually, Chris, I wanted to get your take on this. Is it was it surprising that Kate's brought this up?
Um, so definitely, I think, I think definitely there's I have a couple of points to talk about here. First of all, it's going back to the importance of recording all of our meetings. So James is actually in that meeting recording it and you can find that on wall data now. But without James there, that meeting would go unrecorded and no one would know what it means because those committees minutes are very, very few and far between. I, we could look it up on the fly, but it's probably months since the last meeting minutes were actually recorded, were actually distributed. So it's very important that we get all these recorded. There is a resolution right now within the city council to try and record these. But you know, I've been watching these meetings long enough that it's very cyclical. Every couple of years they try and do this. And at this point, I don't really see it happening. There's nothing new. They're not doing anything different. They're not going through any different channels. It's always the same. And at this point, it seems like they're just doing it because people are annoying enough to do it. So I think it falls on everyday citizens to do that until, you know, there's enough overwhelming pressure. So it's very important that we did that. It's great that James is there because I didn't really anticipate anything interesting happening in that committee at all. So Paul Kate's pretty much first day of being able to actually do anything, because this is the first committee day where the actual talking happens. He, he didn't have to bring up this concern. He didn't have to talk about the concerns of the students. He didn't have to talk about this article that was published. And he chose to and another council wouldn't. So I thought that was very interesting. We will see what happens next week. But I mean, for things that happened during the day, that was the most interesting thing that happened. And and Paul Kate's becomes the star of the day. Definitely. He. He rocked the boat when no other council did. I mean, yesterday, definitely.
James, was that your impression that the other counselors were surprised that he brought that up?
It definitely struck me as something where like usually these meetings are. You don't expect to have more than a discussion. And I was surprised to see like student journalism being brought up in a city council meeting. And I think that's notable.
And Chris, or actually either of you, if you know, is a, do you remember any other times where a counselor has brought up concerns of Brandeis or any university students in city council?
So not really Christine, a little bit. But she always has to recuse herself because she's a direct butter. So not really, no.
Just to say what, what, so she, because she lives close to the property, she could have a financial interest. So she had to recuse herself. From all Brandeis discussions.
Yes, yes. So if you are a direct butter, which I believe is 300 feet. You could be perceived as having a conflict of interest, whether that be financial or otherwise. So you're not supposed to do that. You see that a lot with Randy and the farm. You see that a lot with Kathleen and the firm property. So they have to do that.
Interesting. Okay, so that could be good news, but presumably K. Counselor Kate's is not in the butter. And that's good news for Brandeis students, definitely to have a counselor who can bring up these things.
We'll see what happens. I mean, yeah, if it comes, if you know, if push comes to shove, we'll see where Kate decides to put their vote. I don't, I, I mean, honestly, I'd be very surprised if this housing renewal did not go through, but we'll, we'll see. How far he pushes the questions, I guess.
Great, thank you. Before we move on, I wanted to say a little more background. You had talked about a resolution, the resolution to get meetings recorded. So. During the early days of the pandemic, the all the meetings were virtual and they were posted on YouTube afterwards, and that meant they got auto captioned. So when they went back to doing meetings in person, that meant these committee meetings were no longer recorded at all. And the ones that are recorded by WCAC are posted online with no captions. I don't know why they're posted with no captions, but. So a group of people had written to the city council about this last year and Counselor LaCava. Took an interest in it and it turned out he got in touch with Counselor Darcy, who in the past had proposed recording all meetings. And they brought forth a resolution to do that. And they seem very supportive of it, but then I guess. They brought in people from WCAC and asked them a bunch of questions about how much this costs basically. And they are now waiting to hear back on those questions. So that's why we say, even though I just to fill in on what you mean. Things that have been tried before. People are trying to help it happen, but it it seems like it's kind of got stuck in the process. James, you actually went to those, some of those meetings that I was not at where that was discussed. Is that your take on where it was? Was that accurate?
I feel like with a lot of this stuff, it's very difficult to sort of do new things and it always comes down to money and things like that and how to pay for stuff. And. Yeah, it's, it's. People can be well intentioned, but like at the end of the day, if you need to spin up some entirely new thing to. Record meetings, it has to be done through the existing sort of structures, which is WCAC and getting money to do that is always going to be a problem.
Yeah, and I'm interested. Oh, go ahead, Chris.
I know. It's, I was just gonna say to give credit where credit is due, yesterday at the Economic Community Development meeting, LaCava did bring it up again. And just like he did four weeks ago or five weeks ago, he put in a request. For a follow up. So this is a follow up to a follow up over has, has there been any headway with the information that we're looking for right now, which I actually don't know off the top of my head. What they're actually looking for, but just some information probably about funding or something. So.
Yes, and I do. Yeah, he definitely has, has made an effort on it and it just is moving slowly for the reasons that James said. And. I think that that's why we want to try to fill in the gap by getting some volunteers to go in and record. And we're posting these on YouTube so that they get auto captioned, which isn't as good as professional captions, but definitely better than nothing. So. Check out our YouTube channel and subscribe to it because if we get more subscribers, we'll be able to do live streams on there. Which could make it a little bit easier to bring you what's going on in the committees. So speaking of committees, moving on, Chris. Is going to give us some background on the committee choices and the choices of chairs, but first is going to give us some useful information about what each of these committees do. So it's all yours, Chris.
Perfect. So yeah, I'm going to talk about three things right now. I'm going to talk about what each committee does. Then I'm going to talk about Kathleen's choices for these committees. And then I'm going to talk about the chairs, which were revealed yesterday. So to help me, I'm going to share my screen and we can talk about the docket itself. So this is the current city council with all the committees. So right off the top license and franchise, which is where we just saw that brand nice issue come up. All business permits have to go through here. It's almost always renewed without incident. Usually it's just deterred to the. To the ward counselor. They ask if everything's all set from a legal standpoint or all the forms filled out. They say yes, and then it goes, it goes off forever. That's generally how it goes. It happens every week. And until it doesn't, until something interesting happens, like this brand thing that just came up. I remember. The not so distant past, a bodega on Main Street was opening a little earlier than there's they were supposed to. And somebody complained. So all of a sudden licensed franchise became a very interesting meeting for a few weeks. And so this is like James said, usually pretty straightforward. So until, until it doesn't happen. I remember I was talking with committees about to a counselor one day about my least favorite committees and my most favorite. And they said, oh, you know, it's just like, it's just like anything else. Sometimes there's interesting things in some committees and sometimes it's. So every committee does have some things come up eventually. So this is all licensed franchise. This is the current dock. This is all the things that could be talked about, you know.
So our viewers know if they can find this, you can find this on the city website. And the quickest way to find it is to click on the calendar icon for the date of the meeting. And that's, there's other ways to find it, but I think that's the quickest. Okay.
I want to do it. I just Google city council agenda. I mean, well, some city council agenda and that helps. But my computer remembers it. So then there's public works and public safety, pretty straightforward. Anything that has to do with traffic or roads or anything gets put here. A majority of the time spent here is 1725s, which are street openings. So that means whenever anyone wants to. Open up a street for new utilities or something. It has to go through this committee to approve if the project. Will have been done within five years of the street opening the since the last time it was, it was open to, you know. To stop the all the traffic and all the development and all the, all the shitty roads that are in Walltham. Propping up and all the shitty patch jobs that happened. So every, it's within five years, it triggers a 1725 street opening. And I say that because Randall Blank, who is the chair currently has been passed. He's, it's been his project to try and streamline this process. And I think it might actually happen. I think, I think this will streamline, be streamlined. And it will be actually talked about less than the city council, which everyone will be happy about. Moving on, economic community development, probably my favorite committee. This has been more like people oriented resolutions. The BLM resolution was here, the recording while the committee meetings are here. I really like this committee. Committee of the whole is more like bigger projects that are going on in the municipality right now. The fire station ended up here, the new fire station, the new police station ended up here. Most of the executive session, sessions happen here, which is when. A legal matter needs to be discussed where no, the public isn't allowed and the mayor comes in and kick everybody out. Most of that happens at committee of the whole. It is also the only committee where all counselors are present, hopefully, all 15. Ordinances and rules arguably the most influential, the most important, the most powerful committee. This is where all the special permits go. And so also, if I'm being honest, one of the most boring for me is because it's so detail oriented. About special permits like parking and like parking spaces and a lot of numbers here. I need to do a better job of watching these and I'm saying them better, but probably the most important committee. Move on to the large docket ordinance rules. Finance, pretty straightforward. This is for most of the immediate in going in and going and. Coming in and going out of money. For like very immediate things. Very important meeting. It is recorded. Josh, you had mentioned that committee of the whole is recorded. But ordinance and rules and finance are also recorded. You might have misspoke there. And then there's long term debt as well. I don't know why it's bottom. But this one meets earlier in the day, not recorded. This is for any larger project or any like. Large debt that becomes part of the city. I find this to be the least influential. And one of the most boring ones. Some, some people might disagree with me there. It also, the docket is completely empty right now, which is rare and interesting. So those are all the regular committees that meet. There's also a couple of ad hoc committees, like the new master plan committee, which we talked about last week. That has not been called yet because adult committees are only called by the chair. So it is, we haven't seen what that is like. And there's also the Fernalde use committee, which we talked about last week. We don't even know who's on that committee yet. We don't know who's chair. So, but it did happen to you last year. It usually, this is, it's not, it's not unheard of for it to wait a couple of weeks before meeting. And so those are the committees. Most of them anyway, there's are a couple more talks. Just a quick, brief overview. I should, I, if I had more time, I could. Go into this deeper, but Kathleen McMenamin's choices for committees. Who wins? Who loses? I think, and I talked to her briefly, unfortunately, I think Colleen Bradley MacArthur, my friend, my dear friend. Comes out on the bottom. She gets public works and license and franchises. I mean, I really, I like public works, but I think from everyone here listed, she comes out on the bottom. Unfortunately, Paul Kate's another one close to the bottom, but he's on the master plan committee. And I think it really speaks to Kathleen's philosophy. And attitude towards the city council because she's been there 40 years. She's going to put these new counselors on committees that. You know, don't require as, as much detail oriented stuff because she wants them to start small and eventually 40 years later, they can, they can become. You know, whatever they want. So I'm not really surprised by that. Skipping around ordinance and rules and finance, both no changes at all in there, which I thought was interesting. And what's that?
Ordinance and rules. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. But no, no changes between committee members. And so let's, let's skip ahead to that.
Actually, before we move on to that, can I ask a quick question about public works?
Yeah.
Maybe it's not a quick question. So that committee has oversight of the public works and public safety departments, which includes the police. Police can be a sensitive issue. Is it surprising that Counselor McMenamin put the two newest counselors on that committee?
Police is very rarely discussed there, you know. Talked about. Christine Mackens. BLM resolution and also. Her attempt to take off some of the police funding was done in committee of the whole. So I don't really recall a lot of police work at Public Works and Public Safety.
Got it. Okay. It might. They were in 2020, they were, that was the committee that requested that the police department release some information.
Oh, yeah, I'm not remembering that.
Yeah. And that was, and Counselor Macken was on that committee. And then Counselor Paz was not on the committee, but he helped make that request. But that's what led me to think that it might be a committee that deals with police issues, but it sounds like that was an exception.
Yeah, no, um, yeah, I totally forgot about that. And also, you know, we can go back and forth on, we can. Look at this through a telescope over like who's on which committee, who's on which committee. It's important to note that any counselor can go to any committee. And through a very easy approach of just asking to be heard and a quick vote, they can give input. And I, and all of my years of watching the welcome to the council, never has that ever not been entertained. So any, any counselor can have input in any committee. That being said, it is important to be on a committee and it is, it does tell a story over who's on a committee. So we can move on to who the chairs are. And if you recall, last week we made guesses into that. Why am I having difficulty cooking on this? So we can go right from the start. Public Works, Public Safety, I said Randy was going to be chair. Randy did become chair. Very, very easy one there. Long term debt. I was actually wrong and this becomes a larger story in a second. Patrick O'Brien becomes chair of long term debt. Interesting because Patrick wasn't even on the long term debt committee last year. I, I heard that Patrick asked to be be chair. And also, although he. Only recently got back on the city council, he's been, you know, the cumulative tenure is almost 20 years now, I think. So he does have some idea what he's doing. And I, I am surprised that he is now the chair of long term debt. Yeah, yeah, definitely. I was very surprised. I thought George would keep it and it comes back later and that makes more sense in a second. I'll, I'll talk about. Economic and Community Development. Christine Macken thought it would be Sean Durkey. I thought Kathy and Harris would keep her seat and I was correct, not to gloat. She, I would be hard pressed to find that she would give up that. I think it's because, I think she said that though, because Christine thought she was going to be chair of ordinance and rules. But I think she does a good job chairing economic development. License and franchise, no supply, no surprise that Vidal keeps that. Chair position. And then skipping over it, but. LaCava keeps the finance committee. And as James pointed out earlier, this, this is like not. So like, I wouldn't have that much to discuss with a lot of these people. There's like not the, my favorite people in the whole world. And there's also very little left wing politics on this finance committee. LaCava, Dirkie, LaFauci, McMenamin, Vidal. Not too much liberalism here.
Chris, what's an issue? What kind of issue would that committee deal with that might have a left versus right aspect to it?
I'm not going to have a good answer for that right now, but just like a lot of the money that comes in. Has to be accepted through the finance committee and a lot of the immediate stuff, the very quick like dispersal of money has to come out. So literally anything. Like, you know, I'm looking at this right now. Like for people experiencing homelessness. This is a committee of people that have never really taken up the mantle on that. And we talked about. You know, how anyone can come to a committee, but no one else can vote on it until. Until it goes back to the book. So finance votes on something. And I guess we should have talked about this. Finance committee votes on something. It's either approved or did not. And then it goes back to the full council and the full council can disagree. And then everybody votes on. It has happened a couple of times, just a couple of times in my, in my watching of city council, but it can happen. So that, you know, that concerns me a little bit. Like I said, it, it is the same as last year. So nothing new. It is just a little concerning. Sorry, James.
So for financing, basically they are, they take in the money and then they are also referred to for allocating money to projects, correct? Like they'll get things referred to finance to figure out how to fund the, for an ongoing thing. So. Like, like we mentioned earlier, funding is can be a tricky thing for a lot of projects. Yeah.
Absolutely. And so for the. Biggest surprise of the night was ordinance and rules. And as I said, probably the most influential committee. I thought that McLaughlin would keep his chair. Christine thought that Harris would take over because McLaughlin is now VP. And it turns out that George Darcy, my friend from Ward Three is now the chair of ordinance and rules. I think he's done it before, but very, very, very surprised. And I swear, he was just in a very good mood last night and I was literally, I really wanted to ask George like, what's up? Why is he so talking? Why? Why do you seem in a good mood? And it makes sense. It also makes sense why he is no longer the chair of. Of long term debt and why Patrick is now the chair. But George is now the chair of ordinance and rules. I think that's only good news. George has always been hesitant about overdevelopment in, in Walltham. Certainly in 2020, he did, did things I didn't like, but he has always been hesitant about. Overdevelopment. And so I think this is a good seat for him to be in.
How does the ordinances and rules connect to development?
So all the special permits in Walltham, or I guess I shouldn't say all of it, almost all have to go through ordinance and rules. They have to be, their application has to be dissected by the ordinance and rules committee. Anything that has to change in their application has to be done through ordinance and rules. And then it is ultimately approved or denied from the ordinance and rules. Committee. I talked about how something going out of committee is voted on by the full council a week later. And it had, it can. The full council can disagree. I've never seen a special permit denial or acceptance from the ordinance and rules be. Denied or accepted in the opposite fashion when it comes back to the full city council. I've never seen. So very important committee, very surprised that George R C is now the chair. I think it is good news. Just. Definitely biggest surprise than that to me. And I think that's all we have for committees. Am I forgetting any anecdotes or observations from yesterday? From the committee standpoint? Oh, I guess, I guess one, one anecdote is that in public works and public safety is, is. Okay, it's a Colleen and you had mentioned the newcomers. And it was really funny. Cause I was in that meeting, which is unrecorded. And, and they don't, it's so funny, like new counselors, every, every two years you get to see it. And it's just like, they don't really. I don't know if nerves gets to that of them, but they don't really understand how the order of operations work with the city council. You know, this is not like a meeting of the minds. You can't just talk about anything. There has to be, you have to have something on the dock and talked about. And every two years, people just want to chat. People just want to talk. And that's just not how the city council works. And so they will learn very quickly Robert's rules and. But for now, it will be a lot of correcting them. but for now, it will be a lot of correcting them.
Is this, this is, are you referencing something that happened last night?
Oh, yeah, no, it's just, it's just people just want to talk about public works. That's what happened. And you need to be at any point, you have to be talking about something on the docket. And it has to be in front of you. You can't talk about anything. You have to be talking about the thing that's in front of you on the docket, some item ordinance or resolution. And so you can't just chat. You can't. This is not like a meeting of the minds. And so it's just funny, it's just Robert's rules, which only me and four other people in the world, I'm sure, find interesting. But dollar very quickly.
Great, great.
And so I think those are all my anecdotes. Anything else, James, that I missed in here?
If anything else off the top of my head. Honestly, the the brandest didn't really take the show.
Yeah, yeah, definitely Brandeis. I'm very, I'll be interested. And you know, give give credit where credit is due for us. If we didn't talk about this, nobody would talk about this. If we didn't record it, if we didn't talk about it right now, this would for history's sake, be forgotten very quickly. So hopefully people watch this and care about this issue and look a little more into it. Hopefully, Josh, he will post the article somewhere, I hope.
Yep, absolutely.
Absolutely. And honestly, the kids deserve some kudos for bringing something up like this. So this kind of sticking his neck out.
Of course, yeah, definitely. Credit where credit is due.
Well, on that note, thank you very much. Next week, full city council meeting, right, Monday night? So we'll be back with the recap of that. Subscribe to wall Sam data on YouTube and let us know if you want to help volunteer with recording meetings and we'll see you next week. Thanks a lot, Chris and James.
Bye.